The meeting of Shreveport City Council is now called to order. I ask everybody to silence their cell phones or please place them on vibrate. We are experiencing a little technical difficulties. Please check the comments and there will be a link that will have this meeting with the sound on it as well. Right now, there is no sound, but we will have that up soon as we can. I will ask Father Martin to lead us in the prayer and I will ask Councilman Taylor Pharaoh to lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon this city council the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve us as their officers to promote the well-being of all peoples through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
All face the flag of the greatest country on earth. And as we say our pledge, let us be mindful of the sacrifices of our MIA's and POW's. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Taylor, present.
Yeah.
Councilman Brooks.
Here.
Councilman Taylor Pharaoh.
Here ma'am.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Jackson.
Here.
Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilwoman Bowman.
Present.
Is there a motion to approve the administrative conference meeting Monday, August 12, 2024, and the city council meeting Tuesday, August 13, 2024?
Moved.
Second.
Has been moved by Councilwoman Bowman, second by Councilman Taylor Pharaoh. Any discussion? Let's vote.
At passage with seven.
Does any council member have any words recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes? I do. If the clerk can read Resolution 129.
To give you in advance if I mispronounce your name. A resolution recognizing De'Amaya De'Nae Whaley and otherwise providing with respect thereto by Councilman Allen Jackson. Whereas De'Amaya, De'Amaya De'Nae Whaley, the daughter of Latoya Lee and Dee Anthony Whaley, is a 20-year-old junior at Louisiana Tech University, majoring in Communication Studies and serves as a chapter president of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated on campus, exemplifying her leadership and dedication. And whereas De'Amaya is also the president of the Ladies First Mentor Program, a community service initiative demonstrating her commitment to empowering young women. And whereas she currently serves as a legislative assistant to State Representative Stephen Jackson of District Two, contributing to legislative efforts and public service. And whereas on August 17, 2024, De'Amaya competed in and won the title of Miss Louisiana Port City showcasing her talent and prowess. Now therefore be resolved by the city council and the city of Shreveport in due legal and regular session convene that De'Amaya De'Nae Whaley is recognized for her accomplishment winning Miss Port City, Louisiana, and wishes her the best as she competes for the title of Miss Louisiana.
Can y'all come forward to the podium, please? Mom, come on down too. Anthony, come on down.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
What a pretty self. She is pretty.
I know the mayor has wrote a proclamation for you as well. We won't read that, but I do want to acknowledge that. But I mean, you're just amazing. I thank your mom for all the hard work that she has bestowed on you. I'm glad that you're representing Shreveport in so many ways, out there in Ruston and then on behalf of your pageant. And then you're involved in legislation as well. You are the future of Shreveport. We definitely want to put you on a platform. Just learning how government works is so important. There's so many things that we do that nobody knows that we do and there's so many things that we don't do that people think we do. So just understanding that to me is amazing and you are utilizing your platform to lead other young leaders as yourself is amazing.
Thank you so much, Allen. I just want to say thank you all to the city council. Y'all are amazing. I literally have watched y'all with my mom and Anthony. We've come and we've supported you all, but I appreciate you giving me this small token. It really is dear to my heart. It's big for me and it's big for any young person that looks up to me. I work with ladies first, so I can be able to talk to them about the things that I've accomplished, but let them know that their goals are reachable, that everything that they aspire to do, they can do. And I just want to be a voice. I've always been here at Shreveport and my mom has given me all the tools and my dad as well and my godfather. So I just want to thank them. Thank you so much for being my base. And I want to give all thanks to God for putting me in this earth because he has given me so many blessings that I can't even explain right now because it'll take forever. But he has done so many great things with me and I just want to say thank you to God. Thank you to my family and thank you to you all. And also the mayor, I want to say thank you to him because he personally told me to make a proclamation and send it over. So thank you so much. I love you and your wife. Y'all are so amazing and they said they would support me. So I will do my best to represent all of Shreveport at the Miss Louisiana stage.
What's your talent? What's your talent?
I dance. I do more of a lyrical dance. I like to dance to the music and let the music speak through the dance. My last dance was Bigger by Beyonce. If you haven't heard that song, I suggest you listen to it. It's Bigger by Beyonce and it's just pouring out and showing and telling people that you are bigger than any situation, any circumstance that you are put in. You can accomplish and do everything that you aspire to do.
How do you speak after that?
We're going to come down and take a picture. I invite the entire horseshoe if you want to come down and take a picture just because of your comments and just the words that you're giving to council. We hear a lot of the negative, but you know, it's very rare that we hear the praise. So we do appreciate that and we don't take that lightly.
Can we just say for the record, we so proud of you. We are so proud of you. We are so proud of you.
Thank you. I need to give you a big hug.
Yes.
If the clerk can read Resolution 130. The judge is in court, so she's not here today, so we weren't going to ask her to miss court. But we do want to go ahead and have this read so we can actually vote on it today. It's going to be presented to her on Thursday.
A resolution recognizing Judge Brittany Bass Arvey. Whereas Judge Brittany Bass Arvey is a native of Shreveport and a graduate of Caddo Magnet High School. Whereas she obtained her Juris Doctorate degree from Southern University Law Center and a Masters in Business Administration from Southern University A&amp;M College. Whereas Judge Arvey has always been an advocate for the citizens of Shreveport and serves with various community service organizations. Whereas she is a former prosecutor of the Shreveport City Court and has great visions for the judicial system. Whereas Judge Arvey has met the qualifications established by the state of Louisiana and has been elected to serve as Judge of the Shreveport City Court. And with her passion for law, she will strive to serve the bench impartially and fairly. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Shreveport and due legal and regular session convene that the Shreveport City Council recognizes and congratulates Judge Brittany Bass Arvey as elected judge of the Shreveport City Court, District C.
Thank you. Councilman Bowman.
Yes, can I have the family of Mr. Cleveland White come up, please? Family and friends. Can you read the legislation, Ms. Anya?
A resolution dedicating the 3,400 block of Murdis Avenue in honor of Cleveland R. White. Whereas Cleveland R. White was born December 17, 1951 in Midland, Louisiana, and is the youngest of three children. Whereas he graduated from Webster High School in 1969, earned a Bachelor of Science in Music Education from Gremlins State University in 1973, a Masters of Arts in Music Education from Louisiana Tech University in 1982, a Masters plus 30 in certification in secondary school principalship from Sittinary College in 1999, and furthered his education at Vander Cook Conservatory of Music, LSU Shreveport, Texas Tech University, and Northwest State University. And whereas Mr. White dedicated 40 years to the cattle parish school system, including rose as band director at Fair Park High School, assistant principal and principal at Green Oaks Performing Arts Magnet High School, personal administrator and director of Human Resources Classified Personnel. And whereas he developed the Fair Park High School instrumental musical department from 18 to over 250 students, while earning numerous awards in Louisiana Music Educators Association District Festivals. Whereas he led the development of the Performing Arts Magnet Component at Green Oaks High School and implemented programs to improve academic achievement. Whereas his accomplishments include receiving the Governor's Award from Governor Edward Edwards, being named Educator of the Year by the Caddo Association of Educators, co-director of the Shreveport Regional Jazz Ensemble, the 2012 recipient of the Lifetime Achievement in Music Ministry Award, and the 2019 recipient of the Arkla Tech Music Legends Award, just to name a few. Whereas Cleveland R. White has touched many lives throughout his career. A true humanitarian who has always implemented DPO, discipline, pride, and organization to his students, making sure they equipped with life, equipped to live productive lives. Whereas on October 25th through the 27th, 2024, Fair Park High School Marching Band will reunite to celebrate his legacy and honor the everlasting influence and timeless melodies of Mr. Cleveland R. White. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Shreveport in due regular and legal session convene that the mayor on behalf of the city is authorized to dedicate the 3,400 block of Murdis Avenue in honor of Cleveland R. White. My band, Arvey.
Congratulations and we'll do it big when we get ready to dedication. I didn't attend Fair Park, but I feel like I know you from Councilwoman Taylor and Commissioner Stormy Gage Watts. Stormy couldn't make it, her son was sick today, but she did leave something for you. But congratulations and thanks for all you've done.
Well, thank you.
And your clerk.
I wanted to say something.
Bye, Chair Green.
Ms. White, listen, I just want to say congratulations to you. You've done a great job. Your work speaks for you. I'd also like to thank you for allowing me to work with you and your students at the Green Oaks High School. I watch and listen to you every Sunday morning. And so God bless you and just keep up the good work.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can you let you speak before I do?
No.
To my band director, your one and only, Cleveland White, class of 1987 Fair Park High School. DPO is a part of all of our lives for all of us who participated in the band at Fair Park High School. I was on the dance line. I served as leading lady my last year, but it is what you instilled in us as young students that helped to carry us and bring us where we are today. It is true that you have been a father to many of us and uncle, a leading role in our life. And you, we have carried DPO with us and it has transpired into our children's life. I cannot thank Councilwoman Bowman enough for dedicating this street to you and your honor because from us walking across the street into Independence Stadium, all the years that we did in the rain, the sleet, the snow, where we were just decomposed in our brains saying it didn't rain on Fair Park Band with Jerry Curl Juice running in our eyes with cow heel boots on. But we performed in a way that we entertained audiences, that we were known throughout the United States of America. And because of your leadership and your guidance, you have birthed so many of us into greatness. So it is indeed an honor to recognize you on this day and to give you your flowers while you can smell them.
To Mayor Alsonak, city council members, citizens, and friends, and alumni of Fair Park High School, you have no idea how this incredible honor makes me feel. I appreciate so much the support the Fair Park High School community, the Queensburg community gave me throughout my 28 years of service. They say that if you enjoy what you're doing, you never work a day in your life. Those years of 28 years were years of labor of love. I didn't consider it a job because it was what I loved doing. I'm the kind of person where I never seek personal recognition for myself, but it's always been my aim to put 100% plus into the success of my students. That's what makes my chest stick up because I have so many students that are doing so many great things. As you can see, Councilwoman Taylor, Tanya Bulkin, clerk of council here. And I could drop names for weeks and weeks and weeks. But those are the things that make me so proud when I can see their success. And much of that started with a little old motto that we called DPO. And I think that motto, discipline, pride, organization, has flourished throughout this country. And to see that many leaders stand and leaders of today, those are the things that make me proud. So thank you so much, which you have bestowed on this honor and I will forever cherish it.
Thank you.
Where you going?
Hold on, get a picture.
You gotta get a picture.
Let me say hello to one of my best friends. Mr. Chair, I'd like to say good afternoon to one of my best friends that's in the audience, Mr. KD.
The best air conditioner man in the world.
If you need an air conditioner work, stand up KD, baby hand. It don't matter, he will fix it and you will have some cold air.
Before the day is out.
Mr. Clark.
Okay, we'll wait, okay.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any words recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
I do not.
Do you have any communications relative to the city business, other awards?
I do. I'll ask Chief Smith to come up and give their monthly report.
Okay.
Police Department.
Chief, last couple of meetings you've been doing pretty good long time. So you set a high bar, we want you to keep to it.
Got you, got you.
Take your time, chief.
How much I love you, I come bearing gifts to all of you. What this is, is a placard that we have placed up at every SARS center.
Oh, nice.
It tells your council district, who is the CLO and the Neighborhood Assistant Team Officer.
Oh, this is good.
That services that district and their city contact information. And their city contact information and feel free to use that and share that with any member of the council.
Can you email us a digital copy of this?
Sir?
Can you email us a digital copy of this?
Absolutely, we can, absolutely. That is current as of today in their locations. Okay, if nothing else and you're ready to get started. All right. The first slide you'll see, as you know, our RTC program's going very well. More and more cameras are being added. The sheet, the slide that you see shows that I told camera feeds when this was done was 1578. We exceeded our 1,500 mark, but actually as of today, we're at 1,588 and we expected to get to 1,600 camera feeds before the week is out. All right.
Chief, real quick, where were we before when you took it over? How many camera feeds did that?
Down in the 700s, I believe, 600 or 700.
Good job.
Yeah, we had to expand our capacity. 1,500 was the original contract and the administration authorized. And we've expanded that to another 500. And the way things are going, look like we're going to reach that very, very soon.
Good.
Thank you. First slide you see is our homicides to date. Now, this 61 number is what the actual numbers are that's reported to the FBI. That will include vehicle homicides. That will include someone else who may have been shot or injured the year before, but passed away this year. So we are at 40 this year as compared to 61 in 2023, which is around a 34% decrease in our homicide rate. Next slide you see is our shots fired call. In 2023, we were at 1,936 to date. This year, year-to-date, we're at 1,757, about a 9% decrease in shots fired call. Next slide you see is our shootings. 2023 shootings is where someone was actually hit or injured by gunfire. That could include a fatality or otherwise. In 2023, we were at 238. Year-to-date, in 2024, we're at 204, about a 14% decrease. The final slide that you'll see involves property crimes. First one there is our rapes. In the prior year, we were at 91 and we're at 70 this time period, which is about a 23% decrease. Our vehicle thefts, we were at 800 the year before this time period. This year, we're at 747, which is about a 7% decrease. Robberies, last year, we were at 136 and this year, we're at 104, for significant about a 23 and a half percent decrease in our robberies. Burglaries, 970 in 2023. This year, in 2024, 803, about a 17% decrease. Vehicle burglaries, which is, you know, all over our city. Last year, this time, we were at 1373. This year, year-to-date, we're at 905, for about a 34% decrease in our vehicle burglaries. And that concludes my presentation pending your questions.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for chief? Councilman Brooks.
Chief Smith, we discussed, we met last week, I believe, with the railroad police. Right. Union Pacific and KCS.
Right.
You have a plan in motion for the camera we discussed by the railroad tracks on Marshall Street?
Absolutely. Our technician has gone and looked at the area. He is making contact with the business owner who has the most information so we can make preparations to make sure that we are focused in the right direction. Plans being made as we speak.
So we do plan on getting a camera down there?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for chief?
Any cameras that we, can you give us a status if you all have already discussed where the cameras are for the fire stations?
Yes, ma'am. The original ones, I think it was eight or nine or something, are already done.
Okay.
Complete.
Good deal.
Did we not talk about funding for additional fire stations too?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
But those original ones, it's done and complete.
Okay.
And we are applying for a grant at a local company here in town, also to sponsor additional cameras up along some of the major thoroughfares where the companies are located.
And in our illegal dumping sites. Do we have any updates on those sites too? Because I know that was another thing that Councilwoman Bowman and I were talking about quite a bit, with those illegal dumping sites and those cameras that we knew to place. Have we placed any in some of those sites?
We're going to put our cameras up. We're going to put our cameras up.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we'll worry about the rest when the rest happens.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief. If I can ask Chief Reese to come up, please.
Good evening, chief. I want to just tell you and your team, thank you for your act of service. On Sunday, Monday, 8:00, I heard a loud boom. Went, ran to the front window and my neighbor's house was on fire. We were the one of the ones that called 911 and I know the closest location is Woolworth Road. If I tell you in a minute and a half, y'all were turning on one wheel. The family got out safe, thank God for that. But just to see your act of service, we hear about all that you go through and what you do in these fires, but to actually see a home in flames and three little kids get out safe and the mother and father, I commend y'all. Thank you. I got a chance to see it and just want to say thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I will definitely express that to the crews, of course. The credit goes to those boots on the ground, especially 2:00 in the morning. Sleeping your eyes and navigating over a half million dollar truck to a fire. So I like to think we do it very well, service with a smile and quickly too. So thank you, I thought I was in trouble.
That's a blessing.
Yes.
And chief, will y'all reach out to the family? You told me you were by United Way to maybe see if they need some help because I think that house was a total loss.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Mayor, do you have any other communications?
No, sir, I don't.
Thank you. Does any member have any questions or concerns for Mr. Green, property standards?
Mr. Green.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a property that is next door to 1518 Audrey Lane that needs to be inspected. Well, I don't know if the person is moving out of their property, but there's some contents there that's disturbing to the neighbors. And so if you can have somebody to take a look at that, I greatly appreciate it.
He should have already inspected it this afternoon, so we'll be able to give you a response in the morning.
Okay. And the other property on Watercrest, Watercrest?
Watercrest?
I think it's Watercrest.
I think they have that scheduled for tomorrow morning.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for helping earlier. I still want to update on the one on Lakeshore, the demolition, whenever you get a chance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Green.
Yes, sir.
Would just like to thank you for all of your people cleaning up Mayfield Street.
Y'all did a great job. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
All right.
Mr. Clark, come on down.
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
I'm good, how are you today?
You have a master plan report today?
Uh, I do, I, I thought that y'all may have gotten one yesterday, cause I sent Steven down to take out the fire, but, uh, I can share with you that, uh, the master plan is, process is working. It's alive, it's fluid, uh, we've hired, uh, the neighborhood ambassadors, and these will be the persons that will be contacting neighborhood groups and businesses in respective, uh, divisions of the city. We, uh, have the steering committee in place. The steering committee will be the oversight committee that will be, uh, taking, uh, reports from neighborhood ambassadors and move first, I mean, excuse me, and moving it on toward the, uh, MPC board. Uh, everything is going extremely well. Uh, one of the thoughts that we have, uh, is that because of the excitement that is being shown by the neighborhood ambassadors, uh, the plan called for them to get a small stipend, and they will be getting that, that's already, uh, taken care of. But if they are as good as I think they're gonna be, uh, it could be some consideration to, uh, find funds to allow them to continue to do the things that they're doing beyond the master plan, because they will have established, uh, relationships with persons in your district. They will know all about what's going on in your district, uh, and if we could just, uh, keep that portion of the, the process going, I think you would benefit from it tremendously. Uh, and we're gonna be watching them very closely. They're in training now, they're getting training from the consulting firm, uh, but they are a, an exciting group. I just read emails, they are a real exciting group, and they're truly fired up. And they're saying to Shreveport, that Shreveport is open for business, and we are ready to do whatever it takes to make Shreveport that city that we really want it to be. Uh, other than that, uh, I have nothing more, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, yesterday, in your absence, there was a lot of concerns regarding a liquor store that may be coming to fruition. And I think there may be some follow-up questions today, so I'm not sure if you watched yesterday's meeting, um, if you're at the point where you can kind of answer these questions for us. Um, Mr. Jean was supposed to be giving us some information, um, but I do want to give the opportunity, uh, for council members to ask any follow-up question they had regarding that liquor store.
Would you like some comments now? I just asked, if you wanted some comments now, uh, we did discuss liquor stores, as you recall. And it, it helps when you've been around here forever. As you recall, uh, liquor stores have been a significant problem in certain neighborhoods for many, many years. Uh, and all kind of attempts had come along in order to govern liquor stores and in order to shut liquor stores down, uh, in the older neighborhoods. And none of those things had worked. Uh, at one point, we had, uh, rezoning of property, and we had the L for liquor. One point, we had special exception uses approval, and if a store shut down for any amount of time, they lost that special exception use. We've tried, we had tried everything until we, uh, studied, uh, and observed and looked around and developed this last liquor ordinance. What this ordinance does, I mean, and, and I don't believe that we will ever come up with a perfect ordinance. Uh, this ordinance, uh, just some statistics, uh, since this order, ordinance was enacted, uh, eleven, uh, businesses have applied to be liquor stores, and only two have been approved. So, I share with you that it, the spacing, the zoning, all of these things are working. Uh, but, you know, we don't know what else you want us to do, uh, in, in order, cause we're here for you. But I truly think that, uh, this is really a great ordinance, and that, you know, the two liquor stores that got approved, uh, will, will always make somebody mad. Uh, but you, we didn't try to divide, develop an ordinance that would prohibit liquor stores, uh, totally. We just wanted to provide that protection that we'd heard all the years, and you know the protection. I'm talking about the citizens are saying, we don't want no more liquor stores in our neighborhood. And we came up with a, a way to address that with spacing requirements, uh, we, that, a liquor store cannot be within two hundred feet of a residential district. Uh, and that was strictly because we had heard so often that, you know, we don't want, why do you continue to allow liquor stores in our neighborhoods? And we did not want liquor stores to clutter. So, that's why we established a thousand feet foot rule from another liquor store. These things are, are actually working, and when liquor stores shut down, we, anytime, we go back and ensure that they meet the requirements of the ordinance, uh, so.
Um, Mr. Clark, I do want to defer to some of our seasoned council members, cause I thought we had a moratorium on liquor stores, um, but I could be wrong.
That was a long time ago.
A lot of discussions on, on not approving any more liquor stores.
Like that was a six-month moratorium.
It was a six-month moratorium.
And once it ended, it wasn't extended. But we got, we, we got the ordinance done in the required time. And we met with the, uh, liquor store owners, because they, you know, they have a, a piece of this also. And everybody, to my knowledge, was satisfied with the ordinance that we'd come up with. Uh, and like I shared with you, without a moratorium, seven liquor store applications have already been denied.
With, with this current ordinance, does the public still have the option of weighing in, public meeting?
And, go right ahead, I'm sorry.
I mean, just, I'm just, I mean, because I think that's the biggest issue, is that we don't want to take the voice away from the community in which this, the, these liquor stores are gonna service.
And I was never under the pretense that it was.
And, and I, uh, and I hope this, this comment is taken in, in the positive manner in which it's being given to you. Uh, when we had public hearings, when we had special exception uses, there were a lot of, uh, blood baths, there were a lot of, uh, denials of liquor stores and restaurants and, uh, convenience stores that, in my opinion, and I stress that, in my opinion, were not fair. Uh, because you take a couple of members from a neighborhood, and if they scream loud enough, uh, they will get the rest of the neighborhood stirred up. So, we tried to come up with a way that, with spacing, uh, that, and that if you met this spacing, just like sexual oriented businesses, if you don't meet this spacing, you cannot apply for a liquor permit. And if you meet, and the spacing is pretty stringent, uh, but it does not include a public process. Uh, if a new one is built, we would require them to do a, a neighborhood participation plan meeting, uh, for the neighborhood in order to be informed exactly what was happening. But this has worked much better, in my opinion, than when we had the public hearings and the appeals and the suits that came as a result of them. Uh, this has worked because it's fair, it's equitable, and it gives every business a chance to find a location in the city of Shreveport.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Um, well, Councilwoman Bowman, and then Councilman Brooks.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Clark. Um, no disrespect to you, but the ordinance is not working. My constituents don't want any more liquor stores in my district. So, I am prepared, I did talk with the city attorney, we're gonna do our own ordinance to make sure we can serve the people that elected us. It's still too many liquor stores, we are open for business, but not liquor stores on every corner. You have churches, you have schools, you have neighborhoods, it's way too much. It's, so the only way we can stop it is if we change what our constituents want. And they don't want any more liquor stores.
And, you know, and I don't think, uh, you're going to come up with an ordinance that does not allow a liquor store anywhere else in the city of Shreveport. And it would not be fair just to have an ordinance for one council district and not for all of the rest of the council.
We can do it for every council district, but I'm speaking for District G. Juella have liquor stores, Lexus Drive, one block from each other. So, and, and for two years, we've been talking about this, but every time you look around, another liquor store is coming behind our back. I mean, I talked to you about Pine's Road and Seventieth, you say no sign could be put up. It's a big red liquor, liquor. Turn Elementary is right there, Stipple Chase, um, Baptist Church is right there. You got people that live on Pine's Road. So, we have to answer to the people that we serve, so we'll come up with our legislation respectfully, but right now, it needs to change in my district.
Can I share with you that, uh, there are two ways of, uh, policing or preventing liquor stores? There's the state statute that talks about protective uses, that protects churches, protects daycares, protects schools, protects, uh, public parks and so forth. And that ordinance, uh, was a three-hundred-foot ordinance as a person walk. Our ordinance was a straight line, uh, that two hundred feet straight line from a residence would prevent a liquor store from actually operating. And we prepared this ordinance for the council and did all the research. And I respectfully will get out of the way happily, if y'all want us out of the way. But we work with the council, we prepared this ordinance with the neighborhoods in mind. Uh, we cannot undo what has been done over the years. We thought about one time, uh, trying to go through a process of, uh, determining if a store had met its maximum, uh, potential for revenue, that we could, uh, shut it down based on that. And we've really realized that that was not going to fly, but, uh, you know, we, we developed an ordinance, it wasn't a MPC ordinance, we had public hearings and everything. And I understand, and I respect what you said, Mrs. Bowman.
Councilman Brooks.
Uh, yes, Mr. Clark, a thousand feet between liquor stores?
Yes, sir.
Is that as you walk, or is that as the crow flies?
Yes, as the crow flies.
From property line to property line?
Property line to property.
What about the three hundred feet from school property?
Now, that's a state ordinance, and the city adopted it, but that's how a person walks, using the sidewalk. From the nearest point of the license, proposed license premise to the property land of the protected, the school, the church, the daycare, et cetera.
I guess so, my question then, because, I'm sorry, Mr. Brooks, you finish?
Uh, that, that was all, the, the, so the three hundred feet, let me, it, you have to cross, if it's across the street, you have to go to a crosswalk?
Have to go to a crosswalk.
Okay, so, that might be closer than it seems, if you have, it might actually be across the street, but if it takes you three hundred feet to get there, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And you have to go to up or down the sidewalk.
That applies, that applies to the measurement.
Yes, sir.
Got it, thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor.
So, if, if this is the case, we have a liquor store that's going to be adjacent to a church, correct? So, there.
Where, where is this at?
OP Seventy.
OP Seventy, right across from, uh, Sharon's Defensive Driving.
So, we have provisions in that ordinance, I thought, for that, am I wrong?
No, uh, if it's next door to a church, it would not meet the city or the state's requirements.
Okay, so, Brookshire's on Lion Avenue was not allowed to have?
Cause it was too close to residential.
Because it was too close to residential. And so, if you have a house that's within two hundred feet of this, then how is that liquor store able to meet a certificate of occupancy?
And I think that, that, that liquor store is still under review. I think that a church has been reported, but we have not been able to confirm that a church is next door. Uh, once we confirm that a church is next door, then we can deny the application. Uh, that's why I was sharing with, it works, it doesn't take time. We say it takes too much time to, to conduct business in the city of Shreveport. So, you have to wait for public hearings, and up to six weeks. Uh, this happens at the application process, so it's instantly.
Mr. Chair.
Um, Councilman, um, Butcher.
I think that, uh, Councilman Green and I were really the only ones on the council during the East Seventieth, I mean, the East Kings Highway incident, and I think it was, um, a disadvantage to both sides to a certain extent, because there was no ordinances in place. And for those of y'all that are just joining us, or that weren't, weren't there during that time period, the reason that this ordinance was, was put into place was to alleviate that happening, because it was a disadvantage to the, to the, uh, to Mr. Woods. It was, it was somewhat of a disadvantage to the people that lived behind it, because there was no, and, and you're right, it was, uh, it was, it was a, it was a messy situation that we all went through for months. Um, and so, I don't want to see us just close that door on what we're doing right now. But I do think that, um, I would like for my constituents to have some, some say.
Right.
But I also think that there needs to be the guidelines there, and at any point, we can deny, we can deny anybody's liquor license if we don't like the way it looks, or where it's at, or what it's doing, or we get constituents telling us, but, you know, we, when we came in here, it was like the Wild West.
Correct.
Um, and we had people fighting out in the foyer, we had, I mean, it was, it was a mess. And that went on for two years, so I commend you for what, what we've done, and it, you're right. I, I mean, I, if you've only had, if you had seven applications, and you've only approved two, then it's working. And I know that Brookshires was mad about Lion Avenue and North Ferry Road not being able to get liquor because of where they were in proximity to churches and other liquor stores. I know Whole Foods had, they, they fought y'all for a while about, about liquor. So, it's not an easy process like it was before. And before, the whole thing was, in my opinion, it was just whoever was here, if we didn't want, you know, you know, and it didn't, it, it kind of set the tone for racism, to be perfectly honest with you. And, and I don't want us to go back that direction.
Cause you had an influx of those stores within the inner city.
Yes.
And it was just allowing them to happen wherever it was that they were going to be.
So, I mean, I, I, I'm, I think we can always do better. And, and I agree with Councilwoman Bowman that we need some input from our citizens, and I think we, we can always do better. But I don't want to see us go backwards to where it's just a free-for-all and, you know.
We would be happy.
Yeah. And Mr. Clark, I, I understand where you're coming from, you, you're looking for an ordinance that's, that's fair. You don't want somebody just, we, we can't have an ordinance that says no liquor store, that's, that's not reasonably fair. Um, what we're describing is just oversaturation. Um, there's a, a number of liquor stores already in a given area, so we're saying that given area doesn't need anymore. When you, when you think about a franchise like State Farm, State Farm is not gonna put an agency right next door to another agency, you know, once you have so many, then that area is done. Um, we, we need to expand outside and other areas where there aren't that many liquor stores. Um, so I'm looking for an ordinance that, that encompass, you know, the saturation.
Maybe that, maybe that needs to go to a distance deal, because in, in my opinion, free enterprise, if, if somebody gonna open up and they meet the regulations, one of them's gonna survive and the other one's not.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, but are we willing to let that happen? So, do we need to go from two thousand feet to four thousand feet? I mean, those are things that I think that we can do, and especially like, you could have it in, if they're within so many feet of this or so many feet of that. But I, I, I don't want to see us just say, well, we're not, we're not gonna allow any in this particular area because they've got enough, because they're gonna take care of themselves. I mean, I don't think, uh, that they're gonna be able to stay open if there's three or four right next to each other, you know?
No, we had, uh, we had several on Cooper Road, and I'm sick of it. And we closed it, whatever we needed to close down.
I voted for that.
I know it, and so, the oversaturation, uh, Mr. Chair, I agree with it. You don't need an oversaturation of liquor stores in some areas, because some areas are targeted just for that.
Yep.
And then they're not targeted for premium liquor, they're targeted for malt liquor and, and gut-killing liquor. And so, you have to look at how that premise is done as well, as to who you are prescribing this particular alcohol for. And so, depending on zip code is also a determination of that. So, those things had to be looked at, which also was a reason for the study of which you. So, those things had to be looked at, which also was a reason for the study of which you all did to go over here to look at the feet. So, I understand a combination of what all of you all are saying of whether it takes some time to go over there and tweak that because you don't want to just enter it and you saying liquor right here and there's Thrifty right here and then here this liquor store right here. And then you definitely don't want just all posters of this is malt liquor right here and then here's another one going right down the street. So, no. We had seven, I'm sorry, nine stores serving liquor in the MLK community and then it was difficult for me to get a grocery store. Does not make sense.
Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Clark, you all did a great job on that ordinance. And also, as Councilman Butcher said, it provided a way for Mr. Woods to be able to have a store in this council voted. And I have not heard any bad things about that particular store in that area since he's been there. So, apparently that worked out fine. My question is the one where Ms. Borkin's school is and her church is, as to where are we on that?
And the address is?
That's the one on East Seventieth, I want to say three sixty-nine. It's a, it's a brand new building. It's the only new building on that street.
On Seventieth Street?
Yes. Three sixty-nine.
Three sixty-nine Seventieth.
We're still looking at that one to, we had been told that a church was next door, I think. We have not been able to find a church next door. It may very well be there, but we are not in a position to approve anything until we verify that there's not a protected use where this is being proposed. It is more than two hundred feet from residents. Even though there are some residents in the rear to both sides of the, the building. It's, it exceeds that. We do it strictly by computers, so it's accurate, not walking. But we've been talking about that this morning, you know, I was not here yesterday. But we're still looking at that and to make sure that it complies with the ordinance.
How far is it from Apollo Liquor?
It's more than a thousand feet.
Mr. Clark, on yesterday, I think they had some of the addresses wrong. Three sixty-nine East Seventieth was in, was something in question. But they also had four fifty-eight East Seventieth, four sixty-nine and four eighty-three. All of these show new liquor stores in that area. It's not my district, but I did jot these addresses down and I can forward them to you on an email, but it was four addresses.
I would appreciate it. I don't know when these liquor stores were, were built and-
Yeah, Representative Phelps came down and she did give these addresses that liquor stores were going up. So, if you can clarify, it will help us.
And once, once you get me, share with me those addresses, we will verify it. Because we just go strictly by the ordinance. That's not popular. We go strictly by the ordinance. And if they are within the restricted areas, we do not issue a certificate of occupancy. And that does not get to ABO to start the process between them and the state. And, you know, have much respect for Representative Phelps. But I don't believe that we have approved and allowed a new liquor store to go within one thousand feet of another liquor store or two hundred feet from residential district. That's why I shared with you about the nine. We are very careful. We do a thorough look at the situation because we know that liquor stores, although they have a right to exist, but liquor stores are not the most popular use. So, we make sure that we have made a fair and correct assessment. But we'll be more than happy to look at what she's saying. I doubt very seriously though. And I feel real confident saying this. I doubt very seriously if we have approved three different, three or four additional liquor stores that were not in compliance.
Okay, will you check on the Pine's Road and Seventieth? When you told me a sign couldn't be put up there and there is a big red sign. First, they had that sign that was blowing, that they just attached to the roof that blew over. But now they have a permanent sign there that is bright red liquor. Okay?
Be happy to. And that, that, that's the one that was a tobacco store, I think.
Absolutely.
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, can you send me an update on the housing development that is set to occur in the sixty-two hundred block of South Lake Shore? When you get an opportunity?
We know very little about that, that project. No one has contacted us. I, I heard about it because some residents were pretty upset about the possibility. I think they may have even had a meeting, but we were not a part of that process.
The meeting is September fourth.
Okay.
Mr. Clark, on Sanders Street, I talked to Mr. Gene about it on yesterday.
Here's the church.
Asked him what's going on on Sanders Street. I got a call from some constituents and said that there was a sign and they didn't know what, what, what was it about. So, would you check on that?
And I saw Sanders Street. I think that Sanders Street, maybe up in in the Codelike. I, I saw Sanders Street earlier today. I apologize for that, being able to pull it up. But we are checking on Sanders Street.
Thank you. They are up and armed about what's going to be happening.
And we'll get back with you as soon as we find out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Hey, Mr. Clark, just, just real quick, I, I just looked this up. We're talking about that new building there. The church is on the south side. It abuts the property.
Right.
It's on East Seventy-first Street.
It's next door. It, it's adjacent to that church.
Right behind it and then there's a residential property. I just pulled it up on the tax system, so somebody needs to ride back on East Seventy-first because it's definitely there.
And that's the one, three sixty-nine East Seventieth that we have on hold.
Where the new brick building is.
Ms. Sharon came yesterday.
We, we have that on hold and I will ensure that we confirm that it complies with the ordinance.
Called New Life Baptist Church or something like that, I think.
I've got Sanders not there. We'd be more than happy to, to look at it. And like I said earlier, I mean, you know, we don't have a problem with you all developing your own ordinance. But if you have some concerns about the existing ordinance, we would be more than happy to do some more study and provide some code text amendment to the existing ordinance.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Mr. Clark, you and I spoke probably months ago regarding notifying each city council person about up and coming businesses coming to the area. I just wonder if that's still in the works because obviously there, I can't keep track of how many businesses are coming in my area. I'd like to know just in case constituents ask, I'm at least somewhat in the know. And I think you've got the pulse on new businesses scheduled to be open, permitted or whatever, maybe. It was zoning. Is that what you're going to do?
I think I'm understanding you to say that you all are not receiving notifications of upcoming businesses anymore. Is that what you're saying, sir?
I'm just saying, I'm just asking for you to just send out a quick memo or whatever. There may be, there may be something I'm missing. I don't know.
Okay, I mean, it was just my understanding and I'll check it once I get back upstairs is that every time there's a land use change in one of your districts that requires a hearing.
I get that.
But do you do what you'd like to get copies of new and existing certificates of occupancies in your district? That's already on our web page. All you have to do is pull the web page up and you can identify any businesses that have just come in the district. See, but whatever you need done, I'll be more than happy to implement it.
I would appreciate an alert, just so we all know. As I say, we don't go on that webpage every day. An alert would really help and I appreciate that.
You do?
We don't. Sometimes we just don't. We've got thirty-six thousand constituents.
And I agree with you. Sometimes I don't know because, you might say, I should, but sometimes I don't know because-
Mr. Clark, did you ever find out about the manufactured homes over in the Meadows subdivision?
Is it over there, Councilman Green?
Residents from over there calling that, I guess they saw the sign, so I'm not-
Is, is this by the life share?
No, Meadows. No, this is off of Juella, Meadows subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah, check that out.
I'll check it out, manufactured home.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Everyone should have received the Budget to Act for Finance Report, public hearing. There are none. Madam Clerk, will there be any legislation added to the agenda today?
No, sir.
Today, we're, we're here public comments on agenda items only. Vice Chair, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, sir. Mr. Sammy Mears. Thank you, Mr. Sammy, for coming. You have three minutes.
Okay. Sammy Mears, eleven thirty-three South Point Parkway, apartment one eleven, Shreveport seven one one oh five. Today, I'm speaking on Resolutions nine A, one twenty-eight, one twenty-nine, one thirty and Ordinance D forty. I really like this very much, recognizing Patrick Young at ninety-five sixteen Wallace Lake Road to connect the city's Shreveport Water and Sewer System. Also, please recognize Dee Whaley and recognize Judge Brittany Bass Arvey. Please vote yes on all of these. It would really be appreciated when you work really hard to earn what you deserve. Also, vote yes on Ordinance D forty. This was postponed about two weeks ago and it was about the stage works of Louisiana Property G Unit Building Television in Louisiana. It should have, likely would have passed, but it was postponed. If you'll vote yes today on this ordinance, it would really be very much appreciated and people and myself. We will thank you very much for your help on that. And by the way, Jim, there is, oh, he's on the phone, but there is a golden chick being built in our area.
Mr. Craig B. Lee. Thank you, Mr. Lee, for coming. You have three minutes.
All right, Craig Lee, eleven twelve Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Definitely standing in full support of Resolution one thirty-one in dedicating the thirty-four hundred block of Murdis in honor of Mr. Cleveland White, our phenomenal incomparable maestro and one of the greatest band directors and life coaches in world history. Proverbs twenty-two six says, "Train up a child in the way he should go." And when he is old, he will not depart from it. Dr. White has led the greatest youth movement in this country with DPO, Discipline, Pride Organization. Myself and Tabitha Taylor and many others in the city of Shreveport have benefited from his leadership. I was fortunate, actually, right down Murdis Lane. I was a student at Lake Shore Junior High School under the direction of Malcolm Spencer. So, right down the street, I was blessed to be taught by two of the greatest band directors in this area from junior high school to high school. And all of those lessons carry over. Discipline, Pride Organization was not just a music thing. It was a business thing. It was an academic thing. It was our way that we wrote. And so, at this particular point, I'm glad that Councilwoman Bowman has created this legislation. And in October, when we celebrate our band alumni reunion, this will be a great opportunity for us to celebrate with Mr. White.
We'll be able to pull out our band uniforms.
Yeah, I don't think we can wear, I don't think we can wear those band uniforms.
Still with my bail uniform.
Mr. Marvin Muhammad. Going once, going twice. Chair, that ends public comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We will have the executive appointment of Barrington Gibson, Metropolitan Shreveport Zoning Board of Appeals to consider today. Has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Brooks. Any discussion? Let's vote. There are no items on the consent agenda for introduction or to be adopted. Madam Clerk, would you please proceed with regular agenda legislation?
Resolution one twenty-two, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative purchasing agreement between the city of Shreveport and the Boja City Fire Department.
Been moved by Councilman Butcher. Second by Councilman Brooks. Any discussion?
What is this cooperative endeavor agreement in reference to?
That was one of several. This is one of several where the, we have taken a bid for a particular item and state law allows them, if we do one of these kind of agreements, to piggyback on our same bid.
Councilwoman Talaferro.
It passes with seven.
Resolution one twenty-three, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative purchasing agreement between the city of Shreveport and South Boja Fire District Two.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Butcher. Second by Councilwoman Bowman. Any discussion? Let's vote.
It passes with seven.
Resolution one twenty-four, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative purchasing agreement between the city of Shreveport and the town of Holland Fire Department.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Butcher. Second by Councilman Talaferro. Any discussion? Let's vote.
It passes with seven.
Resolution one twenty-five, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shreveport to sign a consent of assignment by Citizen Acquisition LLC of all, of an oil and gas lease to CEP Acquisition LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by the chair, second by Councilwoman Bowman. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Councilwoman Jackson.
It passes with seven.
Resolution one twenty-six, authorizing the mayor to execute a permanent servitude agreement affecting a one point, I mean, point one zero acre tract of city-owned property with Premium Express Partners LLC.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Butcher.
Second.
Second by Councilman Brooks. Any discussion? Let's vote.
It passes with seven.
Resolution one twenty-seven, authorizing and providing for granting a waiver to the parish of Kato for all city permit and inspection fees associated with the renovation and new construction taking place in Walter B. Jacobs Memorial Nature Park.
Moved by Councilman Butcher.
So moved.
Second by Councilman Talaferro. Any discussion? Let's vote.
It passes with seven.
Resolution one twenty-eight, authorizing Patrick R. Young at ninety-five sixteen Wallace Lake Road to make a connection to the city of Shreveport's water and our sewer system.
Moved to postpone.
Second.
It's been moved to postpone by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Taylor.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I'm going to postpone this because I've, I've had some colleagues reach out to me about the, the water system and that we are continually allowing people to tie onto it. I ask the city engineer and, and public works to forge all if you haven't already gotten at the map of outside the city water customers. I think that's a discussion that we need to have. I talked to Chairman Green of the Infrastructure Committee about having an infrastructure meeting for us to discuss it. I think that we've pretty much decided that those that are close to the city probably need to come in and start helping pay some of the bonds and the things to maintain the water system. Because we have several that were tied on back in the nineties that have not been annexed into the city. However, they're on city roadways, they're getting other city services. You've got a lot in your district, Councilwoman Taylor, Councilwoman Bowman and actually Councilman Talaferro has a few as well. So, I think we really need to have a serious discussion about this before we start allowing more people to, to tie on. It's something that we're going to have to do because we're really in South Kato Parish, southeast Kato Parish. We are the only water source. It's not like where you are, Councilwoman Taylor, or even out towards Greenwood. We are the only water source and the aquifers are drying up. So, we need to come up with a comprehensive plan on how we're going to move forward with this. So.
Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Green.
Certainly, I agree, Councilman Butcher. And I would like to call a infrastructure meeting the next council meeting Tuesday. the next council meeting Tuesday. I don't know the date at 2 o'clock.
September 10th.
September 10th. Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll be discussing those items, and anybody that's interested, make sure that you come so that we can have a discussion.
Thank you. Discussion has concluded. Let's vote. To postpone.
It passes with seven.
Resolution 129, recognizing Dee Amaya Danae Whaley.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by the Chair, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion? Let's vote.
It passes with seven.
Resolution 130, recognizing Judge Brittany Bass Arby.
Some move. Moved by the Chair, second by Councilwoman Bowman. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Mr. Chair, if I may, real briefly. That resolution says that Judge Arby was a former prosecutor with the Shreveport City Court. That should say with the Shreveport City Attorney's Office. That's my only objection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can we get that corrected? Want to institute a substitute motion to postpone until we get those languages corrected. Been moved by the Chair to postpone, second by Councilwoman Taylor.
It passes with seven to postpone.
Resolution 131, dedicating the 3,400 block of Murdis Avenue in honor of Cleveland R. White.
Some move. Second.
Has been motioned by Councilwoman Bowman, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion?
Thank you, Councilwoman Bowman. Welcome.
Let's vote.
Y'all know we had black and gold at Herndon.
Well, we have black and gold at FPA.
Madam Clerk, would you please proceed with introduction of resolution not to be adopted prior to September 10, 2024?
It passes with seven.
She got caught up in Herndon Hornets.
Introduction to resolutions. Resolution 132, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shreveport to sign an approval of an assignment by Cypress Energy Partners LLC of three oil and gas lease to Panola Natural Gas LLC. Resolution 133, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, obligating the city to pay 10% of the construction costs and assume legal liability for and all maintenance and operating costs of subject lighting system I-20 to Greenwood Road, US 80, and Lake Shore Drive interchange. Resolution 134, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, obligating the city to pay 10% of the construction costs and assume all legal liability for and all maintenance and operating costs of the subject lighting system I-20 from San or Fernita Drive to Red River. Resolution 135, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, obligating the city to pay 10% of the construction costs and assume all legal liability for and all maintenance and operating costs of subject lighting system I-49 to Southern Loop interchange. And Resolution 136, authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Progressive Construction Company.
Question. Progressive Construction Company. Where would they be overseeing it?
Sorry. They're doing some construction, I believe, on I-20. William, you might know a little better than I do if I say something that's not completely. But what they want to do is use the yard out on West 70th for a little while to store some things, and they're gonna do some improvements to it in exchange for getting to do that. So, that's really what this agreement is.
It's not on the floor yet. I think we need to get a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Well, no, we want to do it first because, once we do it, they introduce. Yeah, so we want to discuss first. Are there any other discussions?
So, what was that one for, Mr. Daniel?
So, they approached us about storing some materials for their work on I-20, and they, they're going to, there's some bad parts of the parking lot out there that they're gonna repair for us, and we're gonna allow them to store the materials. We thought it was a pretty good deal.
Where's the parking lot again?
It's at the West 70th Street, the new water and sewer building out there. We've got 60 acres of concrete, so.
Do we, are we utilizing full use of that building?
No, it's under construction right now.
Okay. So, will it just be water and sewer that's out there? Any other departments will be coming out there?
Well, eventually, Public Works is gonna move out there.
Can I get a motion to introduce these resolutions? The motion by Councilwoman Bowman, second by Councilwoman Taylor. These resolutions have been introduced. Madam Clerk, would you please proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to September 10, 2024?
Ordinance 97, amending the 2024 budget for the general fund. Ordinance 98, amending the 2024 budget for airports enterprise fund. Ordinance 99, amending the 2024 budget for streets revenue fund. Ordinance 100, amending the 2024 budget for solid waste enterprise fund. Ordinance 101, amending the 2024 budget for retained risk internal service fund. Ordinance 102, amending the 2024 budget for the riverfront development special revenue fund. Ordinance 103, to amend various articles of section in the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code for the purpose of updating certain uses within the downtown zoning district. Ordinance 104, to amend various articles and sections of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code for the purpose of clarifying and updating provision for uses related to dwelling units within commercial spaces. Ordinance 105, amending the code of ordinance in the city of Shreveport to add Division 13 to Article 5, Chapter 26, relative to certain and establishments, relative to the creation and establishment of special revenue funds related to economic development. And Ordinance 106, zoning case 24-92C, and ordinance to amend official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located now north side of Forum Drive, approximately 425 feet west of North Hearn Avenue, Shreveport Caddo Parish, Louisiana, C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District to I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District.
Discussion, Councilwoman Taylor.
Mr. Clark, would you give me an update on what 106 is?
Are we talking about 1024?
2492-C. From Commercial District to Light Industrial Zoning District.
What happened was, the original application was for heavy commercial zoning. There's been a, a process in the Shreveport, city of Shreveport and the Caddo Parish that any property that was changed in zoning as a result of the Unified Development Code, the property owner has a right to request that that zoning be returned to what it was originally. This property was I-1 originally. That's why the board did not grant the C-4, but granted the I-1.
What type of property is it? Do we know specifically? Did the request? If you could just update me, that'd be fine.
The supporting stuff says it's for a contractor's office.
I'm sorry?
The, the supporting material for this particular legislation says it's for a contractor's office, and I think they figured out that the I-1 could accommodate that, which is why they ended up approving that.
So, it's for a contractor's office?
Yes, ma'am.
And he already had the appropriate zoning for a contractor's office?
No objections from the MPC?
I'm just having problems hearing you. I'm sorry.
I said, no objections from the MPC?
No objection. It was, it was his right to be able to return his property, the property zone, to what it originally was.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there a motion to introduce these ordinance? Been moved by Councilwoman Bowman, second by Councilwoman Taylor. These ordinance have been introduced. Madam Clerk, would you please proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Ordinance 40, and ordinance authorizing a lease of portions of stage works in Louisiana, a city-owned property to Genuine Film and Television, Louisiana LLC. And there is a request to postpone.
Yeah, motion to postpone.
Has been motioned to postpone by Councilwoman Bowman, second by the Chair. Any discussion?
Well, I asked that, but Mr. Dark said he almost finished. Right, Mr. Dark, you don't want to tangle it, right? Thank you. Okay. Hold your passes for seven. Thank you.
Vice Chair sleep.
To amend Chapter 38 of the Shreveport Code of Ordinance relative to vacant structures.
Motion to postpone.
The motion to postpone by Councilwoman Brooks, second by Councilwoman Bowman. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, when would you like to have a meeting on this? Asking the mayor.
At next council meeting, or, and I'm actually planning to meet with some of the people that spoke at the public hearing to try and get some specific, some specific amendments. They had concepts, but we gotta turn that into specific amendment.
Just wanted to wonder if you had the follow-ups from the following meeting that we had.
I have not yet, ma'am.
You have not yet? Okay. So, then, when you have all of that, then we can schedule a meeting accordingly?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's vote.
It passes with seven.
Ordinance 87, zoning case 24-95C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located southeast corner of Lion Avenue and Jordan Street from CUC, Irving Porto Zoning District to IC Industrial Campus Zoning District. And I believe Councilman Brooks wants to.
The motion to postpone by Councilwoman Brooks, second by Councilwoman Bowman. Any discussion?
Yes, I have one comment. We've rescheduled, Mr. Clark's office, a male participation meeting tonight at 5:30 at the address 1513 Lion Avenue, Suite 111. So, anybody that wants to speak for or against this should attend the meeting tonight. So, we're gonna, I'll probably vote on this on September 10th.
So, you want to make your motion? September 10th? Or September 24th?
On the 10th, it's fine. Do what?
Can we vote by proxy?
Let's vote.
It passes with seven to postpone.
Ordinance 88, amending the 2024 capital improvements budget and otherwise providing with strip cut tool. Amendment 1, ordinance 88, in program B-B recreation improvement, increase appropriations for airport community center of door recreation in ADA B-11009, and explanation of the amendment appropriates 110,000 donations from Dixport Goods for working airport parks.
The move by the Chair, second by Vice Chair. Let's vote.
That amendment passes with seven.
Moved by the Vice Chair, second by the Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Pass with seven.
Ordinance 89, amending the 2024 budget for general and additional appropriations for the police department.
Some move. Moved by Chair, second by Councilwoman Talaferro. Any discussion?
It passes with seven.
Ordinance 90, closing and abandoning alley in the City of Gold Edition subdivision in section 24, township since north, R-14.
Moved by Chair, second by Councilwoman Butcher. Any discussion? Vote.
Ordinance 91, closing and abandoning two portions of street dedication in Manchester Division in section 25, township 18 north, range 14.
Moved by Councilwoman Bowman, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Ordinance 92, closing and abandoning a portion of street dedication specifically that portions land south of the public access avenue located in Tacony subdivision in section 23 and 24, now 18 north, by 14 west.
Moved by Councilwoman Bowman, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Ordinance 93, levying and authorizing collection barriers taxes holding 17.000 meals per dollar on all properties subject to airborne taxation within the city of Shreveport, Louisiana for the year 2024 in amounts and for the purposes described herein.
Some move.
Second by Councilwoman Brooks. Any discussion?
It passes with seven.
Let's vote.
Ordinance 94, levying and authorizing, and then authorizing the collection of taxes of 1.38 raw meals per dollar on all properties subject to airborne taxation within the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, the year 2024, for the purpose paying principal and interest on outstanding general obligation bonds of the city of Shreveport.
Moved by Councilwoman Bowman, second by Councilwoman Brooks. Any discussion? Let's vote. Madam Clerk, is there any other table legislation to remove from the table today?
You ain't do nothing sick. I ain't got no more.
Order 96, levying and authorizing collection of taxes of 9040 meals per dollar on all properties subject to airborne taxation within bounds of downtown district of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, as defined by Louisiana revised statute of 2740, that entered into the year 2024, in amounts and purposes described herein.
Moved by Councilwoman Bowman, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And before we move on, let's go back to Resolution 130. There is one amendment.
Amendment number one to Resolution Number 130 of 2024, amend the resolution as follows, where Ashley is a former prosecutor of the Shreveport City Attorney's Office and has great vision for the judicial system. This amendment corrects the language concerning Judge Arby's former place of employment in previously read Shreveport City Court in our Shreveport City office.
Had a move by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote. Has been moved as amended by Councilwoman Taylor, second by the Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote. Madam Clerk, is there any other table legislation to remove from the table?
For the record, I want to make sure that, get Councilman Talaferro's vote, because he didn't push it. Thank you. And it passes with seven. And no, sir, we don't have any table legislation to move.
Appeals, we have no property standards, MPC, ZBA, any appeals, madam clerk?
No, sir.
Any other reports from office boards or committees?
Chair of the infrastructure meeting will be on September 10th at 2 o'clock.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
I would just have a couple of comments, but I'd like to thank Father Paul for the invitation. He was my reverend and reverend, Saint Paul, for many years, only with my oldest granddaughter Will, and her first act of service is coming Sunday. So, let girls do it now. She doesn't understand what I told her that it used to be a boys. But thank you. And Michael, I want to step on your toe, Councilman, to the General Manager of Sam Sound. I didn't know if you want to make any comments on the humor of our table.
No, please ring him up. Please ring him up. Because he did an amazing job with Sam Sound, and he gave a buck in the D unit. And the provisions that you made with the Galley Park, who owes to you, or I told him that in the previous council meeting, I mean, amazing job.
First of all, thank you to the mayor, and thank you city council. I think we are on the cusp of something that we don't even quite understand yet where we're going. It was an amazing weekend. I transitioned from Harris to Sam Sound back in 2004. So, to see the volume of bikes downtown in the city, spending money, uncut revenue, it was amazing. It truly reminded me of when we came, when we purchased from Harris to transition the property. I am excited, elated to see what comes next. I know the council, I know that you have all taken a little bit of heat over some of this. It reminds me, for those of you that listen to his music in clubs, it says, "I thought you'd be happy I made it." And let me tell you, the haters that are out there, let them hate y'all. Keep them what you're doing. It was an amazing day.
If you all get the opportunity to walk in Sam Sound to see the book of that is presented, it was epic. I mean, the murals that were there, and I think it's just one of his premier hotels, he's saying, "Cool to you and your staff, everything that you all get that you all extended to the city of Shreveport, we really appreciate it very much."
We are partners of the city, and at the end of the day, we may not always agree. You get 10 people in a room, not all of us are gonna agree. That's okay. That doesn't make you our enemies. We have learned to pass that. So, again, thank you to the council and mayor, I know, I'm excited to see what comes next. I mean, he's just beginning. It's probably gonna take, if I had to estimate, probably 10 to 12 months to get some of these buildings back up and running so that they pass all of our ordinances and occupancy requirements, but he's not going anywhere. Social media posts have been crazy, and he's coming back. I feel this is one of probably three times a year that he's talked about that he wants things like this. And to your point, I can't wait for the final G-dome, hurry on to come in. So, no, thank you to the council as well for making all this happen. Because it didn't work. It wasn't coming here. It wasn't coming here.
Yes.
And we need that, we need businesses back in this community.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Member there, clerk.
The letters, the forms are received from the mayor's office on August 11, 2024, and search for confirmation on September 10, 2024. It will tailor to the downtown development authority, and thanks to senior construction manager, Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Does the county have any additional information? At this time, we would adjust the matter of conversation of clerk of council. I'm moving to the salary of the council for a base salary of $108,000 a year. The salary reported is $79,000. We are adjusting it to reflect this bogus years of experience effective August 16, 2024.
Moved by the chair, has been seconded by Vice Chair Green.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I'd like to commend Miss Bogan. I was here when Miss Bogan came on, and her, she was working for a company. And she was a person that was open for knowledge, to learn all she could. We have this art person who taught him everything that he basically knew. She has gone now from, when I was on council at that time, I used to call her little girl. And she has moved from little girl to the clerk of the council. And to me, I just like to say, I am so proud of you that you have done a tremendous, great job. And God bless you and keep you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes, congratulations on you. We have seven council members to answer to. Thanks for bringing the peace. It does take peace. I appreciate you for that. Keep it together, keep it solid. I appreciate you. Glad you're coming, so proud of you, my DPO sister. I am, you are just a wealth of knowledge, and you bring such a chair to council office, but how you thank us individually to teach us to train us, everything that we need to know is impactful. You are so deserving of this, and congratulations and kudos still.
Tonya, continue to speak up. You've been with us through four mayors. Information that is identified needs to come out. Don't be shy. You got this. I believe you, and you work at it showing, the staff is showing. When I be with them, nothing would be being revealed. So, keep up the good work, and we have our support.
Vice Chair Green.
The staff is showing. When I be with them, nothing would be being revealed. So, keep up the good work, and we have our support.
Vice Chair Green.
Is there a session there or none? There's nothing else in the meeting? We have revival.